... decisions that are complimentary to whatever ideas that we need within our community. In Jesus's name we pray, amen.
Amen. Please rise for the pledge.
...........................................................................
Councilor, I need a motion on work session minutes for September the 4th.
Motion to adopt.
Have most adopters, please raise your hand.
Unanimous.
The motion on the regular minutes, regular councilor.
Motion to adopt.
Have most adopters, please raise your hand.
Unanimous.
Okay. Mr. Mayor, yes?
Thank you. We have four items that we want to talk about tonight. The first of which is going to be a showcase in our community development organization. You heard briefly from Reverend of the CDC, Act CDC. We have for the last 10 to 12, 15 years been working in the west side of Montgomery. We had a presentation over the last month or two centered around Cleveland Avenue. We pulled together through that organization, through the organization of the Community Development Group, through Claire Watson, through the mayor's office, and Gary Sharp, along with Desmond Wilson and Susannah Hill, what we've actually done as a city and a community and as the private sector. God asked Claire and Gary if they would join me in the podium in fact. Oh great. If they would. You know, it looks like it looked important. Gary and Claire have led the...
Can you get any of your microphone a bit better? Your microphone's not... You got it?
Great. To say again, we have prepared a brief 10-minute presentation that focuses on the west side of Montgomery as to what's really happened over the last 10, 12, 15 years in dilapidation, in new construction, in renovation, in revitalization of that particular area. Through our community development organization, Gary Sharp, along with Desmond Wilson, who you know from a CDVG standpoint, Susannah Hill does that as well. Claire, obviously, from the mayor's office coordinates this with many of the other organizations in our city. So with that, Claire and Gary, I'd like for you to make that presentation and Mike, that's what's up first, please. Thank you. About 10 minutes.
This first slide shows how the city laid a foundation for investment with the orange dots representing 365 demolitions and the large circles representing eight apartment complexes that were demolished over the past years. And they were all vacant blighted structures that were removed. Here's an example of one of them. These apartments stretch three blocks down the heart of a community and we were able to remove them and in their place Heritage View Apartments was built as a public-private partnership with Summit Housing Partners. Total investment of over $8.6 million with 800,000 of that coming from the city's HUD funds. Here's another blighted industrial building this time that was right off the I-65 ramp onto Fairview Avenue. The city was able to acquire it, address environmental issues, demolish it, and now we have Fairview Environmental Park. With investment of over $3.7 million that included city, ADEM, EPA, and National Fish and Wildlife Foundation funds. Apartments, Fairview Villa, and Lanier Court were side by side along Edie Nixon Avenue and they were demolished. And in their place, the city was able to develop Lanier Place, which has 26 structures now that you can see some in the picture. It was an investment of $6 million with $3.6 million from city HUD funds and we have a nonprofit capna managing it and there's room for 26 more houses in future phases. We have several grassroots nonprofits working in the area. One is Act CDC. They wanted to tackle the issue of vacancy. They worked with our planning department to receive technical assistance and grant funds and they turned those homes into newly rehabilitated ones that were vacant and causing problems for the neighborhood. Across the street, they have acquired this property, demolished it, and now they're in the process of building a new home for a family in the area that will hopefully move in in October. And they've got five more lots in that area that they hope to build on in the future. This property was burned. It was in a very visible spot on the Voting Rights Trail on the corner of Early and Oak. House to House, another nonprofit in the area, they were able to acquire it, redo it, move their offices there. They have the community meeting there now as well. And they have, primarily in the Washington Park area, they have completed 27 such rehabilitations plus two new construction homes. Now they've moved over to include the 17, 1800 block of Rosa Parks, the streets near there. The green lots on the map show where they've acquired properties from donations and state tax sale. The red stars show where this year they will be building new homes with a grant that they received from Alabama Housing Finance Authority for $1.4 million. And they have plans to continue that building phase on the other lots they've acquired.
Currently, the city of Montgomery is in the process of extending Liberty Street across Edie Nixon, across Edie Nixon, and we're going to spend approximately $350,000 with that particular project. And that is setting up the stage for Alithia House to develop some garden homes. The first phase will be six homes for $2 million. The second phase will be six to nine garden homes on Liberty Court. And we're also taking Marlin Road and we're going to cul-de-sac it and we're going to put some green space there as well for approximately $40,000 for a total investment of $2.39 million. This is a picture of South Hope Street and the Voting Rights Trail improvements. And those are pictures of St. Jude Plaza, which is showing a sculpture that the city of Montgomery was instrumental in putting there as well as at Five Points Roundabout. We went in there and we redid that entire roundabout to make those improvements on the Voting Rights Trail. Some of the major roadway improvements we've made in the area, the trail from Five Point Hill down the West Fairview Avenue is completed for $2.2 million. We've also completed major roadway improvements from I-65 westward to Mobile Highway for $1.5 million. And upcoming is some roadway, major roadway improvements from West Fairview Avenue or along West Fairview Avenue, from South Court Street to I-65 for $4.5 million, as well as from Fairview Avenue to the western southwest Boulevard along Court Street for $6.8 million and from Court Street over to Davenport along the west south Boulevard for $3.8 million. And that is upcoming as well for a total of $18.9 million, major roadway improvements. Anyone who spent some time along Fairview Avenue knows that these are the old Prado Apartments. This is how they looked in 2013, but this is what it looks like now. The expansion of Fair Court Shopping Center up there, City Trends was added on to Piggly This is Dollar General that was constructed along West Fairview Avenue as well. The city of Montgomery acquired that property from a private individual and sold it to Dollar General to stimulate this particular business along West Fairview Avenue. This is Cleveland Court Apartments. This is the way the development looked in 2013 and with the combination of funding from the Montgomery Housing Authority as well as the city of Montgomery using some CDVG funds, this is how it looks today as Park Place Apartments. And that was a total investment of $10.2 million. This is Bell and Graff Middle School. The city of Montgomery as well as Montgomery County combined some funds to build this school for $30 million. The same was done for Carver High School, the new Carver along West Fairview Avenue. It cost approximately $52 million and again, that was a combination of funding from the city of Montgomery as well as Montgomery County. Here are two old apartment complexes in 2009 along Caroline Street where they sat on both sides of Caroline Street. This is how they looked then. But the city of Montgomery acquired that property and partnered with EJI and they were able to build a national memorial for peace and justice. This is how it looks now in 2018. And that was a $20 million project right across the street. The Memorial Meeting Center is under construction. That's how it looks, it looks similar to that today. That's a total investment of $153,500,000 of public and private funding and the city of Montgomery actually used funds to pump the prime, so to speak, and to encourage private development. Mayor?
Yeah, city councilors, you got any questions? Because at the end of the day, that 153, about a third of that is actually city of Montgomery funds, whether it be CDVG funds that we have allocated for economic development and some others, which as Gary said, primes the pump for the private sector to come in. It does not include projects that we have ongoing now. The one project, Court Street, the repaving, everyone says, well, when's that going to happen? Well, a lot has already happened. All the rights away, all of the curbs and gutters, all of the utilities have now been taken care of and moved back. We had every expectation that it would be done in September. The letting by the state, this is one of those 80/20 deals, but it will not be let by the state until the February timeframe. So in the March, April timeframe, the last phase of this project, which would be the asphalt, will in fact be put down. The rest of those will be followed on. But this is an example of what has been done over the last 10, 12, 15 years in this area. The first slide, there was some 350 properties that were identified that now are not there because of the efforts of lots of our organizations. We identified throughout our city, 350 or so, a couple, three years ago, through the end of this year, this fiscal year. We'll get every one down but about 25 and we'll move that one pretty close. But we've had another 100 or so added to that list. So the work is in process, but I wanted you to see what our community development organization has done over the last several years to make West Montgomery and all of Montgomery better. I get asked all the time, why don't we ever spend any money on West Montgomery? And this is just our way of saying $153 million in the last 10 years has been spent there. You have any questions?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Good job. Any questions to the mayor?
Ashley Ledbetter is the executive director of the Montgomery Area Business Committee for the Arts. She is an organization that we've used to help us spread art through the Public Art Commission, through the major warning of businesses who do things that are significant in the art arena. She came up with a project, having seen it somewhere recently or in the last year or so, where we have taken quotes from famous people and we have bronzed them and we're in the process of beginning to place them. And what I wanted her to let you know and everyone else here to know for the first time, what the quotes are, who the quotees are, and the direction that we're going in placing this. Because as we have seen, the Hank Williams statue has been moved to right in front. We've got great plans for the green space where the incubator was. There's lots of activity will be going on in the next 30 or 45 days there. But also, we're going to be installing these quotes. So Ashley, if you would come and take over the picture show.
Thank you. As he said, I'm Ashley Ledbetter with the Montgomery Public Art Commission. And Mike, if you can forward it. In some time visiting Greenville, South Carolina several years ago, there was a group of civic leaders who went and visited there. And one of the things that they came back with that we wanted to do in the city of Montgomery was to start an idea for public art and to increase our public art in downtown and in the city of Montgomery to improve the quality of life for our citizens. One of the ideas that we stole, or whatever you want to call it, we stole from Greenville, South Carolina, or we saw was...
Borrowed.
Borrowed, not stole, I'm sorry. Is the idea to have quotes in the sidewalk. These are pieces of granite. This is one that was featured in Greenville, South Carolina. Mike, if you'll go to the next one. We have commissioned nine of these that will be, or excuse me, eight that will be installed in this area in downtown Montgomery. And we will concentrate them in this area. We hope that they will be installed next week. Mike, if you'll go to the next one. And this is a photoshopped rendition of what it might look like. And we will have these different quotes and I can't guarantee you that's exactly how they'll be placed. Once we get out there and place them, we'll see what looks best in what area. Mike, if you'll go to...
Make sure everybody understands where that space is.
Okay, go back, Mike, one more. This area is right there on Commerce Street behind where Hank Williams is now at the front there and then just leading towards the riverfront tunnel there and the big sign that's there. All right, Mike, if you'll go into the next one. This is a close-up of what it might look like in the sidewalk in that area. And that is a quote by Dr. King. "We may have all come on different ships, but we're in the same boat now." If you'll go to the next one. And these are the actual pieces of granite that we have. One by Paul Bear Bryant. "It's not the will to win, but the will to prepare to win that makes the difference." "To invent, you need a good imagination and a pile of junk," by Thomas Edison. Go to the next. These quotes were determined by, we sent out a survey to local citizens and then also on social media. And Public Art Commission came up with the top ones and then we selected which ones. Sometimes that light at the end of the tunnel is a train, that's Charles Barkley. We've already gone over Dr. King's. Okay, the next one. Dr. King, we have another one. "Darkness cannot drive out darkness, only light can do that. Hate cannot drive out hate, only love can do that." WC Handy, "Life is like a trumpet. If you don't put anything into it, you don't get anything out." Next one. "Each person must live their life as a model for others," Rosa Parks. "And I would rather walk with a friend in the dark than alone in the light," Helen Keller. And I think that concludes it. So we hope to have these installed and it should be something neat for citizens of Montgomery to enjoy while they're downtown and looking at these different quotes.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Yes, and if it's popular, we'd love to expand it.
Very good.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Ashley. She's done a great job. There are a lot of other projects that she's working on through the Public Art Commission. She was instrumental in having the mural done there on Maxwell Boulevard with... Nat King Cole. Thank you. A Montgomery native, Nat King Cole. The third thing that I want to present is the Advertiser Community Hero Award. This week or this month, it's with Thomas Tullis, an individual who I personally do not know, but I've come to admire his work. He has been working with our most precious resource, our children. I'd like to introduce Bro Criff and Michael Gavin, if you come and make the presentation so that we can thank him for the great work that he has done. And we look forward to having a picture made and hearing from him. Bro?
Thank you. I will try and keep it brief. I'm very excited by this one. I appreciate the city council, the mayor, having this opportunity again. If you're unfamiliar with the Community Hero Series, we honor one person a month who does things that go a little unsung, contribute to our community above and beyond who they are and their position. And I think we have another winner in Mr. Thomas Tullis. I'm glad that I get a segue off of what we talked about with the west side investment in terms of the financial investment in the west side, because I think what goes along with that financial investment also is the personal investment. And I can think of nobody better than Mr. Tullis, who is doing that at Bell and Graff Middle School as the counselor. He's been there for 13 years. He was inspired by his mother to be a counselor, but it's the investment that he puts into the place personally, physically, socially, emotionally, psychologically is the kind of difference that he is making. When you hear him talk or when you hear other people talk about him, they talk about physical things. They talk about him teaching classes when there was nobody available for a class, a math class, two years ago and teaching them all day long because he filled in like that Swiss Army knife that he is. He talks, they talk about the mop that he will pick up in the cafeteria and clean the floors because someone needs to clean up in the cafeteria so the students have a clean place to go and eat in and so they understand what it means to keep up after yourself. But he also provides an emotional and a psychological place for those students at Bell and Graff. He has boxes of clothes for children in need who may not have the clean pants that they need for that day or the iron shirt. What I love about the iron shirt too is he will iron the shirt for them so it is pressed and they understand. He will do home visits and talk with the parents and with the families so they understand where their kids are going and helping them develop physically, emotionally, psychologically. He will drive them to places that they need to go because they may not have the transportation and the car they need. He will take them to church on Sunday at Shiloh Baptist because he feels that God needs to be in their lives. He leads by example and he leads by showing them the way. He ultimately is the patriarch for that community at Bell and Graff Middle that is so needed. He's the kind of person that we talk about all of the time in this community that we need. We need more strong men. Well, Mr. Tullis is that man. But when you hear him talk, what I love, you see the quotes and the story that we have. He talks about the young men and the young women. He'll say about the young boys, he'll say, "One of my sons." He will say things about stability and moral responsibility to those students and to his community. He'll talk about being mindful that the students are watching him and so his behaviors must reflect the behaviors that he wants them to have. Because we're also talking about a school, Bell and Graff, where we have 86% of them on free or reduced lunch because they're from an impoverished community, a community we just talked about $153 million in investment in. It's also a community where children die too early and he has to deal with that on the daily basis. So when we think about Montgomery Public Schools, which we think about a lot and we talk about a lot on a daily basis in our newspaper, we talk about the challenges that it is facing as an organization, sometimes we forget the people that are involved in the school system on an individual daily basis, those students, those teachers, those counselors like Mr. Tullis. We don't give enough due time to the work that they do on a single daily basis. Well, today is the day where Mr. Tullis gets his due. So on behalf of the Montgomery Advertiser and our sponsors, Beazee Allen, the city, the airport, I present to you Mr. Tullis, our community hero for the month of August.
I'd like to thank Superintendent Anne Roy Moore, my principal, Ms. Saint Floyd. Very special thank you to the people or persons that thought enough of me to nominate me for this award. Could have been a whole lot of other people. A very, very, very special thank you to the children that I served, their parents and all stakeholders. Thank you to the seated council. Thank you to Mayor Strange. Special thank you to Mr. Friss, Montgomery Advertiser. Thank you all. I'm just thankful. I appreciate the opportunity and the honor. Congratulations. Kenneth Pascal. Kenneth, if you would come. Kenneth represents the Alabama Family Rights Association and he's here to receive this proclamation where we have named Alabama Family Day on September the 24th and Alabama Family Week, the 23rd through the 29th. As I said, I can't think of a better segue into making this presentation because at the heart and soul of our community are our families. They are the strength of any community. So congratulations for what you're doing, what you've done. I told you I would not read all of the proclamation because there are a lot of warehouses, but anytime you have more than five warehouses, that means you're doing important work. But now therefore, the city of Montgomery hereby proclaim September 24th as Family Day and the week of September 23rd through 29th as Family Week in the city of Montgomery and encourage our citizens to join together in observing this day/week by spending time with their families and by engaging in appropriate ceremonies and activities to honor and strengthen both our city and our families. So congratulations. Thank you.
First, Mayor, thank you. Thank you for proclaiming the last Monday in September as Family Day. And the last couple of years, some of the people in the community, they said Monday doesn't work for everyone. So what we have done, we have extended Family Day to Family Week, which allow everyone in the community to do some type of family activity with your family. And you may say, why? Any organized or civilized society, family is the cornerstone. Unfortunately, we have seen our families slowly become degraded. So I would like to ask everyone in this room tonight to do some type of family activity one day next week, starting on Sunday, whether you do a potluck at church. Monday night, you sit at the dinner table, turn your cellphones off and have a conversation. I remember when I was a kid, I learned so much and we shared so much at the dinner table. But society has told us to be so busy until we don't have time to sit with our families and with our kids. So therefore, when our kids run into issues and problems, they don't run to the dinner table because we haven't established that environment. So I would like to establish that environment coming, starting next week. What a, Mayor, I want to echo what you said. What a great way to end your message tonight. Montgomery's doing a lot of great things. I want to ask the city council, the leaders, to join us on Family Week. We would like to use the hashtag #FamilyDayAL, I'm sorry, #FamilyDayAL18. And so it can circulate not only in the city limits of Montgomery, but throughout the entire state and the country. So with that, Mayor, I just want to say thank you again.
Good. Let's get a picture. Thank you. Appreciate that. Thank you. Appreciate that. Thanks again.
Michael's having technical difficulties.
Technical difficulties. Good deal.
Mr. President, I don't have anything else, but I see representatives of leadership Montgomery in the audience and you were able to be there where I was out of town. Might you suggest what happened last Thursday with our sanitation organization?
Yeah. I can't say enough for leadership Montgomery's, what's our, which one?
Torchbearers.
Torchbearers class and what they did by sanitation workers last week. I mean, you got two leaders, y'all stand up. I think, anybody else with leadership Montgomery here? Your class, your leader, but it's her class, put together a deal for our sanitation workers last Thursday for lunch. We had 300 men in orange shirts having lunch at the Embassy Suite, paid for in total by the money that this group raised, which AW that raised the money, almost $10,000 they raised to have lunch for all these people and then have $3,000 with a prize that they gave away, plus they all had a take-home bag with them too. What a wonderful way to thank our employees that you did last Thursday. I couldn't have been more pleased to see what went on that day because y'all did a wonderful job, had it organized quite well. So, Leadership Montgomery has a wonderful job in this city. And for people that don't know about what Leadership Montgomery does, you need to find out more about it because these people are doing more things for this city, trying to bring our city together. It wasn't a, it was an interracial group that did all of this. It was just a perfect example of our team working together, our city working together. And I was so pleased and I want to thank you and your class for what you're doing because I think you have another part of that class doing, we talked about in the meeting this afternoon, going to do the bullying deal with the schools. So, we getting, we getting some real good things out of Leadership Montgomery so I appreciate everything that happens there. For those of y'all that don't know about Leadership Montgomery, it's in its 35th year. It goes back 35 years and you've got people in this city that have been through it and it's always an interracial group that goes through it every year and they go through every department of the city and every, all kinds of things, they learn about what's going on. And then they go back into the community and they communicate with one another and it, it's a very strong program for us. It's made our city a much better place to live. Thank you for what you do. Okay, Madam Clerk, first item. We had some people talking. I'm going to, on the communication, I'm going to call them as the item comes up.
Yes, sir. Item number one, ordinance establishing a curfew for minors.
Okay. Mr. Pruitt, I'm, I'm going to let some people, I've got Ernest Claybon wants to talk on this item, Ernest, and Bishop Sawyer. So, Ernest, you talk first and Bishop, you get it. Yes, sir.
Ernest Claybon, 1832 Spiegel Street, Mr. President, Mr. Presidential Pro temp, and the members of the council. This really bothers me because I'm a father. I have two children and Ernest Claybon and Alicia Claybon should raise our children, not the federal government, not the state government, and not the local government. Mr. Pruitt, I understand your intentions. I think your intentions are good, but the road to hell was paved with good intentions. So, we have to examine this. What's going to happen with this curfew? What's going to be the impact? A lot of you don't know. I'm a retired correctional officer. I started out at Tupewalla. I went to Holman, then the state. The only difference that inmates have that we don't have in the free world is they don't have that Fourth Amendment right of a reasonable expectation of privacy. I do not want our kids to be treated like they're criminals. We don't need to criminalize being a teenager in my city. If our kids need to be disciplined, rest assured, I'm going to do it. You might have to get the chief to keep me away from my kids if they're out after 12 o'clock, but that's my responsibility, not the city's. And I know that the majority demographic population that's going to be affected by this is going to be young black men. It might not be intentional, but that's going to be the consequence. You're violating 14th Amendment rights. You're violating First Amendment rights because everybody, regardless of age, has equal protection of the law. And we don't need to violate the constitutional rights of our constituents, no matter how young they are. I have to tell you this. We're cooking a recipe for conflict. We're cooking a recipe for resentment and we're cooking a recipe for disaster if we do this because I know the consequences. In addition to serving as a correctional officer, I served as a military police officer. So, I understand some of the conflicts with law enforcement. But before that, before my adult career, I've had to deal with being a black man. And I dealt with it in Birmingham and it's the same as it is in Birmingham as it is in Montgomery. And we don't need people coming up trying to justify themselves, justify how old they are, justify why they belong there. They belong there because they live here. If we let the government... Thank you for your remarks. I appreciate it, Mr. President.
Mr. President.
Yes, sir.
Let him go ahead and finish. You want to finish, go ahead and finish. Come on.
All I'm going to say, Mr. Pruitt, is I think your intentions were right. Your leadership that you showed, I think you showed a tremendous amount of leadership when this council was going to change the retirement plans in regards to the health care. And I was proud of the whole council because y'all stood up together and made, made a good decision. I want you to make a correct decision in this case because injustice anywhere is a threat to justice everywhere. Thank you, Mr. Pruitt.
Thank you. Bishop Sawyer, we speak now. Come on up to the count, to the speaker, we can hear you.
I think they can hear me. You know, I got a loud voice on behalf of the police department. I worked with the VA in Miami, Florida for almost 19 years. I was a private investigator here in 97 under Chief Russell. And I was a licensed private investigator and I've seen a lot of things happen here. He's not talking about the ones that are in control.
How best, Mr. Bishop, Mr. Sawyer?
For the ones that are in control, under control, they're not, nothing need to be done. But the ones that are in mental health, that the parents can't do nothing with, and you're shackled in the police department, they can't act when somebody's unruly at service stations and they can't arrest them.
Please, we can't hear you. Can you talk, can you talk in the mic, please?
I say to the council, I'm 80 years old. I was born in 1937, D715, and I'd be 81. Never been in jail because my parents didn't allow me out in the streets after sundown. And that's the problem, we losing control of our children. Not all the kids are bad. We have some good kids, but there are some that need discipline. And there are some that don't need to be out at service stations 10 and 11 o'clock at night, stopping folks from coming from work, getting gas. And even the store owners, they're scared to say anything because a whole bunch of kids going in the store and half of them coming out with their pockets full. And you're shackled in the police department. They can't do nothing. What, what, I mean, laws are made for the situations. If there's been killing in, in Montgomery, there's got to be something done. I don't want to go out there driving on Southern Boulevard and getting shot. Maybe you do. But I preach every Sunday, I preach righteousness. It doesn't matter whether you're Caucasian, black, or what color you may be. The Lord need to take charge when they have the, in help of the city council. There have been a death of a kid killing his parents because of health problems. How you expect for the police to handle a kid that's having a health problem? Let's take the shackles off. Let's stop the killing in Montgomery. Give the police some hands up and help them. When you see something going wrong, call them. Don't be afraid, they're your friends. We pay them to protect us. And kids going all through your neighborhood, when you going to work, they know when you go to work, and not all kids, I'm not saying all kids, but I'm talking about the ones that are out of control. That's what we're talking about. And not only that, some of the parents are out of control too. Amen.
Thank you, Mr. Sawyer.
May I ask one question? Hey, Bishop, Bishop.
Bishop, Bishop, you got a question?
You know, you eloquent and you a bishop and everything, but I don't know whether you for it against it.
Sir?
I really didn't know what you, I want to know, are you, you speaking against the ordinance or are you speaking for the ordinance?
I'm talking, I'm talking on behalf of the police department as a citizen that has been in law enforcement.
Okay, but still, my question is, are you in support of the ordinance or are you not in support?
I'm in support, giving the police department some hands up. When they go out, they ought to have some authority out there.
Okay.
They shouldn't be boy scouts.
I got you.
Okay. Mr. Pruitt?
Mr. Genright, could Chief Finley come up and just share with the numbers to the audience what they came up with over the last three months on this study of 17 and under and 21 to 18? Did I say Chief Jordan or Chief Finley? Did I? Forgot who I see it.
The, for the last 90 days, we did a, we did a collection of information on the field interviews, on contacts. So, for the last 90 days from 6:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m., there were 63 stops. And these are individuals on these field interview contacts that are under the age of 17. And so, from 11:00 p.m. to 6:00 a.m., there were 60 stops. So, the, the numbers are pretty much even across the board in terms of the police being in these communities where they need to be based on data and based on complaints from the citizens.
Can you talk a little bit, Chief, about the 21 and below?
21 and below, the numbers went up slightly. 21 and below, again, the same hour, 6:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m. was 163. And from 11:00 p.m. to 6:00 a.m. is 140. And so, when we look at those numbers, based on, again, based on data, based on complaints, part of this, this, this study was to show the council of the concerns that we had with a large number of juveniles committing or being out during those late hours from 11, 12 in the morning. So, the numbers, again, is, didn't show that spike like we, we thought it was, it would be. And so, again, the, the officers with the PD is really out there in these communities to prevent some crime. And again, these are not, these particular stops are not 911-driven. These are officers in our, in our communities doing part walk and talks, being proactive and to prevent additional crime from taking place.
May I ask the chief a question?
Yes, sir.
I want to put you on the spot, but I'm going to ask you, you know, because I just think we at the city council, we legislative part, we can pass something, all, but it has to be executed.
Absolutely.
So, you're the executioner. Let me ask you. Are you for the ordinance or if you tell me you don't want to, going to go to, huh? Don't think I should? No, 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 I want to put you on, I don't, the most reverend that's, has asked, most Reverend Green has said not to ask, I might be putting you on.
But if you want my opinion, well, based on data.
Well, that's right, you know, we right, we straight up, let's get, let's get your opinion.
So, so based on data, if, if the data showed something that was this crazy, that we got this issue and concern of doing those late night hours, then I would be for it. But the data did not dictate that. What the data showed us is that based on data, based on complaints, that we going to serve these communities the day, night, throughout the 24-hour period, we're going to be effectively, proactively in these communities, serving the citizens of Montgomery. So, the data does not support it.
And you so eloquent, so you would be against, I mean, you're not, I mean, the ordinance is not going to...
The, the, I am, based on the data and based on what I have, I won't support it.
Okay.
If I may ask, the issue, the issue that I do, I can see where you can say the data because looking at the data between 11:00 p.m. and 6:00 a.m., there were only 60, what you call inquiries, and only two arrests. Okay? So, two arrests, I assume that they were breaking the law at that particular time. I'm talking under 17.
Right, right.
So, there are only two arrests during that time. So, therefore, with two people over 90 days, that doesn't show, I guess, an alarming rate of people out committing crime at that time. But we do, I think, in terms of the city, what I'm asking is, that incident that happened on Southeastern Boulevard where there was a shooting, the guy got shot in the head and a lot of people were loitering. What, as, as the chief, what do you need from the council so that we can give you what you need? Because I agree with the bishop, that we need to make sure that you have everything that you need so that situations like that can be prevented while also at the same time not violating anyone's right to assembly. Is there something whereas we just need to work something different whereas a police at his own discretion can then break that up if he has a reason to believe that the crowd is getting too rowdy? For example, I saw a video at, I think it was AMC Theaters, where there were a lot of kids out there and the guy, the police officer was trying to remove a lot of the children, but they were still gathering or, and the parents were dropping them off right there. So, what do you need in the event that a police officer can see a blatant violation? Is there something that we can give you so that you at least can be proactive on it within the rights of the Constitution?
Well, well, let me, right, I will address that in one second. Two arrests, but during those 90 days, it was 24 arrests or 25. And so, the majority of those arrests, those 23 or so arrests was made during those early hours.
Which is the curfew hours.
Yeah, we talked about the curfew and we talked about the other hours. So, when we look at apples and apples, we not having that volume of issues. And so, the volume of issues was during the first half of the day. But to answer your question with that video that you mentioned, the, the first rule of thumb should have been call on-duty, on-duty resources that are working. So, that officer that was on that Facebook, he should have called on-duty resources, we would have quelt that issue. That was something that we've been talking with management, so that shouldn't have got out of hand. And it didn't get out of hand this weekend because we are aware of that, on-duty resources know about that. So, instead of waiting on that witching hour, that 11th hour, we are going out there and being in that preventive stance. So instead of waiting on that witching hour, that eleventh hour, we are going out there and being in that preventive stance. So, so based on, um, our discretion, based on our constitutional governance, what we will abide by, we would do the right thing to make sure that we have a reason to put somebody in jail. But based on being in these communities, we're going to have a reason to be in these communities based on crime, based on complaints that they need is there. And so to answer, to have this, this, we have enough on the books and that we, if we gotta pull out the books to find out what is more applicable for handling this type of crime, we would do that. But we have enough on the books and based on what we have right now, um, I think that, uh, with manpower, with utilizing the on duty resources that we have and changing some hours to address those issues, to meet those needs, I think that we can make it happen. So I don't see any, any, any additional ordinance.
Okay, great. So, uh, just so we clear, uh, that incident that happened at Eastern Boulevard, moving forward, you made certain changes in the way that you handled it.
Oh, absolutely, absolutely.
To address that. So, um, I know that the police came at ten o'clock and they dispersed, and then within ten to fifteen minutes, they came back. And that's when the incident occurred. And of course, it did occur before the curfew hour. So you all did disperse them. But is there something that you all can do or plan on doing to stay there where they won't come back? Or how does that work? Do you circle back or? Because they did come back ten, fifteen minutes earlier. Maybe, you know, is that something that you plan on doing to circle back?
You know that, we, we learn from those mistakes and that's how we get better in, in dealing with issues and concerns. So, uh, one of the things that we, we can do a better job is have a one or two officers or supervisors just to really, uh, claim that, that, that real estate to make sure that, that area is totally dispersed. And so when we have these reunions, when we have these events that pop up, you know, or we get these late night calls in a community where it's loud music, you know, so we may just do that drive-by, but we're going to stay there to make sure that we got peace in that neighborhood. And so sometimes it don't, don't happen on the first try, but when we get those late night calls, we and the communities calling, we have a vested interest to make sure that there's some calmness before we leave. We just not going to leave in chaos. And so we learn from those mistakes. And these supervisors, um, know, uh, that, uh, in order to provide a better customer service, we have to babysit that community or that, that block or that business until we feel, uh, with certainty that, uh, this stuff is not going to rise up again.
Okay.
Let me ask you, can I, can I, let me ask one question.
Yeah, sir.
Okay.
Go ahead.
If the police, any policeman sees what he perceives as a crime being committed in his presence, he has the authority, does he, does he not, chief, to, to make an arrest?
Absolutely. If he has probable cause, yes, sir. Absolutely.
And if during Monday, Tuesdays and Wednesdays and Thursdays and Fridays, when the school system is in, there is, as I, there is a, um, the Montgomery School System has a truancy rule, uh, does it not?
There, there is a state law on that and we, we, uh, are governed by that. We use that. We are in partnership with NPS right now to do truancy, uh, sweeps, uh, truancy patrol. Again, based on data, uh, where we need to be and having that coordinate, uh, coordinating effort and communication with NPS, we do target enforcement, uh, on those truant individuals that we need to kind of monitor, babysit to make sure that we got some compliance.
And can I follow, and I won't say another word, I, 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 I won't pause you there because I probably be down a lot. But, uh, but, but, but if, if one of your officers or even you, chief, sees someone who he's, or she determines that this person is, uh, thirteen or fourteen or fifteen years old, uh, during, uh, school hours, I mean, you have the authority, uh, to stop that person.
Based on state law, we do, based on, and, and we do this every day, Fridays a week.
Okay.
Monday through Friday.
Okay.
Mr. President, I might also interject, chief, not only is there a state law, but there's also a city law that mimics, uh, that mirrors the state law that says that, uh, it's school-aged children between the eight, uh, between the ages of six and seventeen and between the hours of eight and four o'clock in the afternoon are not to be walking the streets. They, there is a daytime curfew that is mandated by state law and, and a city ordinance as well.
Yes, sir.
May I also say, chief, I just, like, we have four officers every day during the school hours that work with the school system and the truancy that are riding this city, looking for those individuals that don't need to be out and need to be in school.
Okay. Ms. Pruitt?
Wow. A lot of discussion, Mr. President. And, and, and I think.
Big subject.
I know, and, and, and we'll get on and move on, but I want to say my piece. I think we've missed the whole point of this ordinance. The whole point of this ordinance was not written because, uh, we had issues at a McDonald's on the bypass or wherever it was on Troy Taylor Road. The issue was why we brought this up because perception, whatever it is, is that we have an issue in this city with crime, point blank. Our district attorney is telling us that we have a problem with crime. Now, we said numbers that are down, you believe what you want to believe. But that is why this ordinance was brought up. And the Mr. Claiborne's, uh, speaking about his children. If we had two hundred thousand Mr. Claiborns in this city, we wouldn't need this ordinance. This is not intended for your children. It's intended for those sixty-three children that we stopped. That was not a nine-one-one call. That could have been more calls. Why are those children out? The intention of this ordinance is, and as Chief Finley has done a good job with our police department, we do park talks and walks. We do cops with coffee. And I asked chief earlier, and help me if I'm, 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 with my wording, and I said, why do we do this? He says to get into, to, to the neighborhoods, to meet people. That's what this curfew is. If, if there's a kid that's out after twelve o'clock at night that's under the age of seventeen, there's a problem in that home. And we can talk about parents raising their kids all they want to raise them, but it ain't working. And if we continue to do the same thing over and over again, we're going to get the same results. And that's why I brought this ordinance up, not to lock kids up, to figure out what's going on with them. And we can talk till we're blue in the face. If parents will do their job, then we're going to be all right. Well, they ain't doing it.
Well, they ain't going to get blue in the face, I can guarantee you that.
But, you know, it is what it is and just for kicks, Mr. President, I'd like to move to adopt.
And most adopt, all in favor, raise your hand.
Count three.
All opposed, same sign.
Four.
I actually got more than I thought I was going to say.
Councilman Genright.
I'm sorry, you're not signed up. You're not signed up, sorry.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Yes, sir. Next item?
Item two.
We did, we took area, okay. Next, no, we, we threw that, next item. We're not going back to item, okay?
Item two, application for restaurant retail liquor license doing business as JW Beverett's Soul Food, eleven seventy-two South Decatur Street.
Need a representative of JW Beverett, uh, Beverett's Soul Food. You hear? JW Beverett's Soul Food. Yes, ma'am, okay.
Hi, good evening.
Your name, the record.
Teresa Jackson, owner of JW Beverett's.
Okay. I have four people signed up to talk about, about this. Uh, let me call on them now. Uh, Fay Traywick, all of you together. Fay Traywick, you hear? Would you like to come forward? Kelton Durham. All of you together. Okay. Uh, Terry Brown. And Leon Harris. Let me ask you, you're, you're, let me talk to them first, ma'am. I, I know you're for, this is your business. All of these people, are you for or against this item?
We're for it. We're all for it. We all live in the neighborhood.
All four of you for, for it?
Yes, sir.
Okay, that's what I needed to know. Okay? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Larkin?
Mr. President, um, in the interim since, uh, since our last council meeting and, and this item came up on, on the agenda, I asked the, um, uh, the patience or the indulgence of the applicant to give me as the representative of the area an opportunity to consult with the neighborhood, uh, residents and, and in particular with the neighborhood leadership to make a determination as to what their attitudes would be with regard to this. I had an opportunity to meet with Ms. Jackson and to speak with her extensively during that period of time since we met two weeks ago. And also to, um, to do, uh, some consultation with neighborhood residents and with the neighborhood leadership. And found that there was no, uh, significant opposition to the granting of this license. Also had an opportunity to understand more fully, uh, Ms. Jackson's, um, passion and commitment for the operation of this business, not just with regard to, uh, operating a, a business that would be successful as far as the profit margin is concerned, but her deep-seated commitment to, uh, going outside the four walls of the business and making a real difference in the community. So I would just like to give her an opportunity to talk briefly about her business, uh, how it came about and her plans for moving forward in the future.
Okay. Thank you very much, Councilman. I appreciate it. And, um, Mayor Strange, Mr. Genright is the president of the council. Um, I've lived in Montgomery now for a total of probably about twenty years. I'm a graduate of Alabama State University. I've served previously as the director of the Montgomery Education Foundation. I've served as the deputy district director for Congressman Bobby Bright, the second congressional district. Um, and in between that time, I also served as project manager for Central Alabama OIC. So I am invested in the community and I do give back. And I've given back since I've lived here, as well as to my hometown. The vision for my restaurant is not just a restaurant, but is a gathering place for the community. Um, at the chamber meeting, um, last week, I made the announcement that we are closed on Mondays. However, we're offering up our space for two Mondays out of the month, the second and fourth Monday for meeting space for the community. So if nonprofits don't have a place to meet, they have an opportunity to come to our location to have free space and they're not going to be required to make a purchase. That is the way that we give back. Also, we do fundraisers. We have, uh, two delivery services we use. We use Waiter and Grubhub. Grub has, Grubhub has given me ten thousand dollars worth of coupons, where you receive ten dollars off any fifteen dollar purchase. So we're planning a fundraiser right now with a local organization where we're giving those coupons. And basically Grubhub is going to be making that, the bulk of that donation to them by giving them that ten dollars off. I don't lose any money as a business and we're giving twenty percent back to the organization. So it, for me, it's all about giving back to the community. I've also worked for the Montgomery Clean City Commission. So whatever I can do to invest in our community in that neighborhood, which is not too far from where I live, that is what I'm going to do. And for me, it's all about giving back. Today I have a couple of things with me I would like to share with you, and I'll just tell you what it is and then I'll share it with you, um, after the meeting. Number one, I have our full menu with me. So if at any time you would like to order, I hope that you would come by the restaurant, but if you're unable, then please order online. And secondly, because, uh, the two weeks gave me, did give me an opportunity to really think about, um, the liquor license. And, um, I had already mentioned that I am going to take the responsible vendor class, which is nine hundred and fifty dollars per person. After talking to the, um, attorney that's offering the course to me, she has offered to offer the course to twenty-five additional people at no additional charge. And that is a state class where she's certified to teach and to train other businesses as well. So after the meeting, ma'am, we can talk about how we're going to offer those positions to the community. So I really appreciate you giving me the opportunity to, to, um, service the community. And I, it's my hope that you will grant us this opportunity.
I read about you in the Montgomery Advertiser Sunday.
Yes, sir.
And I was excited about what I heard.
Thank you so much.
Somebody else told, somebody, somebody else told your story, not as good as you told it, but they told your story very well.
Well, thank you so very much. I do appreciate it. And I.
Mr. Larkin?
Thank you very much. I, I moved, uh, to adopt, uh, the ordinance.
And most adopt, all in favor, raise your hand.
Eight, uh, six. We've got one abstention.
Okay, one abstention, okay, see.
The resolution is adopted.
Good luck with your venues, that's great.
Teresa, don't you have an event tomorrow?
Uh, tomorrow, actually, the, the actual ribbon cutting was on yesterday. However, we will have our mayor there tomorrow, having lunch with us, so we'll have a meet and greet. So it's a great opportunity to meet our mayor if you hadn't have, if you have not had an opportunity to meet him. Of course, I've known him for several years. And I would like to say to all of my friends, if you don't become upset with Mr. Archley from abstaining, actually, um, I do business with him, so that's why he's abstaining. So don't send out the witch.
Invite the city council to come. Invite the city council to come tomorrow. Invite the city council to come tomorrow.
Oh, and, um, I did see, uh, Mr. Bowe, Boweinger, I'm sorry. I appreciate you, I think I saw you at the ribbon cutting, am I correct? And, um, Councilman Larkins. So I would love for the rest of you to come out tomorrow. Uh, Mayor, do you mind if I tell everyone one time if you're going to be there tomorrow?
Uh, well, let's see. What time will I be there? I'll be there at, uh, about eleven thirty.
About eleven thirty. So if you need an opportunity to sit around and have a good time and, um, our, um, our logo says on the, on the building, um, at my house, it's always the food comes first, the family, and then all the stories. So we have food, family, and vegetables gathered around our table. So I hope you'll come tomorrow and join us. Thank you so very much and I appreciate it.
Good luck. And number three?
Item number three, ordinance authorizing assignment of lease and disposition of right, title, and interest held by City of Montgomery at Moulton and Tallahassee Streets.
Need a motion to spin rules, in a second, please.
Move to spin the rules.
All in favor, raise your hand.
Unanimous.
Move to adopt.
And most adopt, all in favor, raise your hand.
Unanimous. Ordinance is adopted. Item four, ordinance authorizing purchase and sale agreement and sale of real estate owned by the City of Montgomery to Cheryl Cabbagestock.
Motion to spin rules.
Move to spin the rules.
All in favor, raise your hand.
Unanimous.
Move to adopt.
All in favor, raise your hand.
Unanimous. Ordinance is adopted. Fifteen, ordinance authorizing purchase and sale agreement, sale of real estate to Neo-Madada Dalla, located at eight-ten Early Street.
Need a motion to spin rules.
Move to spin the rules.
All in favor, raise your hand.
Unanimous.
Move to adopt.
All in favor, raise your hand.
Unanimous. Ordinance is adopted.
Kind of quick, I want to convince you on the name, on why you did that word, name. Very good.
You're welcome. Item six, ordinance authorizing purchase and sale of agreement of, and sale of real estate owned by the city to Temple of Restoration Worldwide Ministries.
Need a motion to spin rules, Jim.
Move to spin the rules.
All in favor, raise your hand.
Unanimous.
Move to adopt.
All in favor, raise your hand.
Unanimous. Ordinance is adopted. Item seven is moot. Item eight, resolution finalizing the revocation of the business license of VP Station Thursday, Inc. at seven sixty-two South Perry Street.
Mr. President, they've come into compliance. We need a substitute.
Okay. Need a motion on the, uh, I need a, I need to spin rules on items eight.
Motion to spin the rules.
All right. All in favor, raise your hand.
Unanimous.
Need a motion to adopt the res, the resolution and a motion to substitute.
Move to adopt the resolution.
All right. Now I need a motion to substitute.
Move to adopt the substitute.
All in favor of the substitute, raise your hand.
Unanimous.
Manning on the main motion, raise your hand.
Unanimous. Resolution is adopted. That's a substitute. Item nine, resolution revoking business license for failure to pay sales tax and authorized at the show cause hearing for Bryson's Fine Jewelry at eighty-seventy-three East Chase Parkway.
Mr. President, this will be setting up a show cause hearing for October the sixteenth.
Okay. Need a motion to spin rules.
Motion to spin the rules.
All in favor, raise your hand.
Unanimous.
Motion to adopt.
All in favor, raise your hand.
Unanimous. Resolution is adopted. Item ten, application for lounge retail liquor class two package license doing business as King's Tobacco and Beverage at forty-four thirty-two Troy Highway.
Representative King's Tobacco?
Chris Hargett.
Hey, Chris. This is a public hearing. You want to like speak against this item? Please come forward.
Which one is this? The number seventeen?
Everybody against it? I mean, you're going to just hold your hand, everybody's against it. One person speak and everybody hold your hand. That's say everybody coming forward. Okay. Anybody for it? Okay, thank you. That's what we need. That, that, that'll take care of it. Home former councilman. Yeah, I, I hear you. You got all these neck, saying against it. Mr. Bill wanted to hear that, wanted to see that, so. Mr. Bell wanted to hear that, wanted to see that, so. You want to speak a minute?
Yes, sir.
Okay, go ahead.
Mr. Councilman, Mr. President, my name is John Dowell, and I've lived in Regency Park for over thirty years. And in that time, I've seen my district and my community's transition from once was a very vibrant district up and down the bypass, to having things like the U.S. Post Office in Winn-Dixie and Alberston, the Governor's House Hotel being very active, Montgomery Mall. Our apartment complexes were places where people loved to go and to stay and to put down roofs in the apartment complexes, whether on Woodley Road or on Troy Highway. But over the last twenty years, we've definitely seen a negative transition of our community. As people began to leave, as Montgomery shifted and moved east, more people began to leave and business became more blighted and more open space and neglected. And since then, we've been seeing another transition, because we believe that even though there is blight there, given enough time, people will come back. And we began to see that, and we're so grateful that the city has put in the fire department and the police department inside Montgomery Mall. We're so grateful that the I-65 corridor is in place to provide incentives to businesses up and down the bypass. We're grateful that Capital Import is there, that Burger King is there, that now Popeyes is there. We're grateful for all that we've begun to see in turning our district around. And so now, as we're turning our district around, we ask that you continue to allow economic development, positive economic development to come to our district. Over the last seven years, we've been able to see improved lighting on Troy Highway. If you lived in Regency Park way back in the day, you knew it was a jungle trying to get out of Regency Park onto Troy Highway to go toward Montgomery Mall. But we're so grateful that there is a traffic light that was put there, there was improved lighting that was put there, there's paving of streets that was put there, and we really want to continue seeing positive economic development come to our district. We're grateful that the Family Dollar is there, that the Dollar General is there. And we know that Regency Park has had our share of issues, and we do know we've been stigmatized, but we have good people in Regency Park, people who are proud of where they live, who've been there and who've seen the transition. But we've also know that we've tried to work to and get others involved and engaged in this process, and that is a work in itself, getting community people to come out and take pride in ownership. And that's because our neighborhood has transitioned even more. Where you had homeowners, now you have renters. And where you have homeowners and renters, you have people who have not been homeowners before, who don't know how to take care of property. And as a result, we've seen a decline in our community. Let's continue to work together to make a positive impact, not only in the city, but in our district and in Regency Park as well. We need your help. Encourage positive businesses to come in to relocate there. Encourage businesses that will not detract or cause harm, or cause a neglect, or another stigmataation on top of Regency Park that's already there. We need your help. We ask that you continue to look at businesses that are part of the South Montgomery Development Plan, that we took so much effort in trying to improve and to make. So please don't carry it over, please don't talk about it anymore, we've had enough. We need your help to help us infuse positive economic development in District Six and Regency Park.
Okay. The public hearing has been held, it's probably for the council. Mr. Bell?
Yes, sir. Mr. Dowell, you talked about economic development, but are you against, you didn't talk about?
I'm for a positive, that will enhance the community and the district.
So give me your position, are you in favor of the ordinance, or are you not in favor?
I'm not in favor of the ordinance. I live in Regency Park.
I understand.
And I know what it's like to have a package store right there in the front of our neighborhood, and it's enough to have a package store and two gas stations that serve beer and wine in close proximity, and to have lauders at businesses. We don't need any more, yes, sir, I am against.
I want to ask you a question. You were a city councilman, you sat right here and listened to see.
Yes, sir, I did.
Is that the reason why you never called your city councilman and asked him for his support? I mean, because, I'll be frank with you, nobody necessarily from Regency Park called me, all the other people, but I'm just wondering, having been a city councilman, and you know that the city council, since I've been here, all the rest of the city council will give due deference to District Six, is that the reason why you didn't pick up the phone and call District Six?
Well, two reasons. One, sir, because the telephone goes both ways. And two, when I was a city councilman, I was proactive in going out to the community and finding out what they wanted instead of waiting for them to come to me.
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
I have a question, Ms. Bell, Ms. Bell, I have a legal question. There is, within fifty to a hundred yards of this place, people that are doing the same thing, roughly, maybe a hundred and fifty. What does that do to us legally by telling this guy no? I mean, is this?
It's just your discretion.
He just appealed.
Well, let me tell you, I talked to Michael Jackson, who's the, ma'am?
Yes, sir.
I've talked to Michael Jackson and the people in Bells Mead have voiced their opposition. Talked to Bart Prince, the people in the Woodley Park area, talked to Alfreda back there, she's over, uh, Whitney Smith is Els Mead.
You got a young lady back here from East Park.
And so they've all, they've all are in opposition.
Is that nobody's fault? You don't have anybody here?
Yeah, yeah.
Except the representative, okay.
But let me ask, let me ask Mr. Hargett something. Mr. Hargett, I've seen you come down quite often, and you represent a lot of people, and I'm not against, I represent people, but I'm just wondering why the owner wouldn't come down, or?
He is down here, I brought him down for that fact. I appreciate what they said, I appreciate the community, I brought him down specifically for that, where you could talk to him if you wanted that information. Because I knew, being a new place, we've gone over this before, it's been transfers, new ownerships, you had no problem. I knew, and I do respect the community enough to let them speak, and I understand, so he is here if you would like to talk to him personally.
I want to ask one question. Does he have a business on Ann Street?
No, that's, I do do that, gentlemen, but that's a different one. I believe that you're speaking of there's a package store as well, too.
And I want to ask you a question, because it's in my district. Now, I hope you don't take this personally, but I'm noticing that every time there's a package store, I have nothing against package stores, it's, selling of the liquor is legal in the state of Alabama. Well, I have a problem with the city councils having any business and approving or not approving, I don't think that's right. But while I don't question your ability or your authority to set it up because there's business, I notice, and I'm just going to be straight with you, that most of them are in, quote, "the black community." I never see any, and this is not racial, I'm just, I never ever see a package store that's in a, quote, "majority," and I know we integrated a white community. Is that something why you gravitate toward the black community? Is it, and I'm going to ask the same question, is it that black folk drink more whiskey than black, than white folk?
Yes, sir, I have no authority to answer that. I'm merely an accountant that represents these, I do not open these stores, that's, you know, like you mentioned, that I come down here often, so I merely, these people come to me, offering my services.
I understand, I understand, I'm not, I'm not.
So I don't know the answer to the reason that's popular.
Okay.
I have a question.
Yes, sir, Mr. Green.
So this is not a new package store, this is basically a change of ownership?
No, in the past is what I was mentioning, that's often when I come down, it's a transfer, but no, this is a new package. This building is built out to that, the owner of the store said he will build it to specifications. They have not started that because of, we're waiting for this.
I just heard you mention change of ownership, I just thought that this.
Yeah, sorry, I was trying to clear up when I was here in the past.
I think, y'all, I think we've already heard the negative, we know what the situation is. Mr. Bell, you didn't hear anything else?
Well, if you indulge as one of the people, one of the community, the senator.
All of y'all, Regency Park, right?
Yeah, Mr. Williams.
Okay.
Mr. Williams, here.
All of us just want to say that when...
Come with a light, please, with a light.
You know, I'm the president of the Regency Park Community Organization. No, I have not talked to Mr. Bell, it recently came to my attention about the package store going up there. And my same thought is that why always the black neighborhood? Why we have, we already have enough stores that are around that neighborhood that serves the public now with alcoholic beverages. We don't need another one, we know the negative image that Regency Park has had, we are finally beginning to overcome that, now we need to move forward. We don't need to put things or stores that is going to take us further down the road where we cannot recover from.
We, I appreciate your information, everybody's already raising their hand, said they were against it, we understand that. So I declare the public hearing has been held, it's probably for the council.
I need his name for the record.
Gerald Williams.
Gerald Williams?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Bell?
Let me tell you, Mr. Hargett, I have grave reservations. I want to carry it over and let you talk with these people, but it is my position that, you know, regardless of what my personal opinion would be, I represent the people of District Six, and when the constituents of District Six come out, I am going to give them great difference. It has nothing to do with your, with your business, you understand? But I'm inclined, I'm going to take it over, I'm asking to carry it over for two weeks?
Two weeks, okay.
Convince the people back there that you're going to be a good corporate neighbor.
Where's the owner here? You said the owner was here, right?
He's back there, but...
Does he want to speak now?
No.
Mr. Bell's going to carry it over anyway, so.
Okay.
We'll play it down, talk next two weeks, okay? Okay, next item?
You've got all the people here.
Thank you.
Item eleven, application for retail beer and retail table wine off premises only, doing business as Thirty-One Pace Car at seven-one-twenty Mobile Highway.
Representative Thirty-One Pace Car, please, Thirty-One Pace Car. Yes, sir, come forward.
Good evening, Councilor, good evening, Mayor.
Sir?
Representative Thirty-One Pace Car.
Your name, sir?
Ruth Wick.
Okay. This is a public hearing, anyone who wants to speak against this item, please go forward. Seeing none, it's had public hearings been held, it's probably for the council, need
Need a motion to suspend the rules, Mr. President? Move to suspend the rules.
Have most been ruled, all in favor, raise your hand.
Unanimous.
Move to adopt.
Have most adopt, all in favor, raise your hand.
Unanimous, resolution is adopted.
Good luck with your business, sir.
Thank you.
Item twelve, resolution appointing Allison Pierce to the Medical Clinic Board Metropolitan.
Need a motion to suspend rules on the rest of the agenda?
Move to suspend the rules on the rest of the agenda.
All in favor, raise your hand.
Unanimous.
Need a motion number twelve?
Move to adopt.
All in favor, raise your hand.
Unanimous, resolution is adopted. Thirteen, resolution reappointing Ramona Blankenship to the Medical Clinic Board Metropolitan.
Need a motion to adopt.
Move to adopt.
All in favor, raise your hand.
Item number fourteen, resolution appointing nine members of the Building Code Board of Appeals.
Move to adopt.
All in favor, raise your hand.
Unanimous, resolution is adopted. Item fifteen, resolution designating nuisance abatement agent.
Move to adopt.
All in favor, raise your hand.
Unanimous, resolution is adopted. Sixteen, resolution assessing the cost of abatement on unsafe structures on various lights.
Move to adopt.
Brandon, you got anything you want to show us, you got anything on the board tonight? Television cameras, put your cameras on stuff now, okay? Montgomery Advertising, thank you so much.
City of Montgomery.
How many you got? Two-nanny. Year-to-date, our department has responded to fourteen thousand, two-hundred-and-two complaints. Of those fourteen thousand, ten thousand were found in violation. Since our last hearing on the Fourth of September, we responded to seven-hundred-and-forty-one complaints. Of those seven-forty-one, five-hundred were in violation, and we're asking for your approval tonight to abate two-hundred-and-ninety properties.
How many you got?
Can I ask a question?
Yes, sir.
Is there any way that you can add an additional column which would include the district, and then also total by district? In other words, and then sort it by district, and then the actual names? That way, we'd get a feel for which district is, you know, has.
Yes, sir.
Because right now, it's just, I don't know which one of those I'm going for my district.
Well, I was going to say, we do have it set to where you can search and filter your view on the Open Data website.
Now, I'm just saying, for the people that are here.
Yes, sir.
It would be great if we had that.
Absolutely.
Three, four, five, six, and seven.
Yeah, but it would be nice if we could see that so that the people here would get an idea on, you know, which district is affected the most, and maybe we can make decisions based off that the next budget means.
Absolutely, yes, sir.
There you go. There you go. I need a motion to approve.
Move to approve.
All in favor, raise your hand.
Unanimous, resolution is adopted. Item seventeen, resolution declaring public nuisances, authorizing assessment of immediate abatement and assessment of cost.
Motion?
Move to adopt.
All in favor, raise your hand.
Unanimous, resolution is adopted.
Okay. All right, Mayor Kirk, you've got some...
Yes, sir, I put some contingency funds for your approval, the mayor's already approved them for District One, one thousand dollars to Flowers Elementary School, for District Eight, one thousand to Child Protect, one thousand to Cancer Wellness Center, five-hundred to Greater Valrhode Neighborhood Association, two-hundred-and-fifty to Carver High School, two-hundred-and-fifty to Jeff Davis High School, two-hundred-and-fifty to Delee High School, two-hundred-and-fifty to Park Crossing High School, two-hundred to Lee High School, five-hundred to Georgetown Neighborhood Association.
Mr. President? Yes, sir.
District Seven, let's give sixty-two-hundred dollars to the Marchadimes for the signature chefs.
Sixty-two-hundred?
Yes.
Six thousand?
Six thousand-two-hundred.
You got money?
A District Five would like to give eighteen-hundred to Ridgecrest Neighborhood Association, and then twelve-hundred to Green Acres Neighborhood Association, then one thousand to Seth Johnson Neighborhood Association.
One thousand to Seth Johnson.
All clear?
Mr. President, I called all mine in today.
I thought you was all done.
Yes, sir, I did.
Okay, anybody else? Need a motion to adopt these?
Motion to adopt.
All in favor, raise your hand.
Unanimous.